Special City Council Meeting, I do call this meeting to order and let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd all please rise, please supply.
The Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I have Henry take role for us.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keelan.
Here.
Scott Porczatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Julian Peterson.
Here.
Eric Holson.
Here.
Two absent, you have a quorum.
Okay, Henry, would you also read the clerk's statement for the open meeting law for us?
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
You have an agenda in front of you, I know there were some handouts that got put on your desk, but the agenda is basically unchanged, we have two items under the regular agenda, so I'd be looking for approval of that agenda.
So moved, second.
Motion by Kealan, second by Peterson, that we approve the agenda as printed with the additional handouts, any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. We have a, just a real quick, I think it's a real quick item, we have license report number 1235, this is a special Class B temporary application to sell fermented malt beverages and wine for the Wapaka Rotary Club's annual banquet, which actually occurs tomorrow night, so luckily we're having this special meeting tonight.
Mayor, I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Lockwood, that we approve this license report number 1235. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, so the big item that we're here for tonight is the renewal of our insurance, and we know that that is from a July 1st to a June 30th, so we're coming up on July 1st, and that's why we decided to have the special meeting tonight. Henry, you want to set it up for them?
Yeah, as you know, we had about a half hour, 45 minute discussion on this topic last week, I don't know, about every three years or so, we do go out to market on our insurances, this would be for all our insurance, except our airport liability, and we have some underground storage tanks at the airport. Our current carrier is EMC, and our broker is Gallagher, and we identified eight firms that could bid, if you will, on our insurance, we sent them packets, four of them came back, and then Tina and I, based on, you know, the pricing and judgments about coverages and stuff, picked two firms, EMC, and then the Leagues Mutual Insurance Program, and we were very open, we shared the results of that first cycle, and then we went back to both of them, said, okay, sharpen your pencils, give us your best premiums offers, it's an opportunity for you to explain your company, maybe what makes you stand out over the other, and the information we got back on that second go around is what you saw last week, and we discussed it. There were some questions raised that were very legitimate, and I was just not in a position to answer, felt comfortable answering them, and I think after the discussion, you just felt, well, let's bring the companies in, and then just talk to them directly, and that's why we're here today. We've got representatives from both companies.
So I did talk briefly to the representatives beforehand, and I just asked them to just introduce themselves, and then give us a little background on their business, as long as they're here, and, you know, if they have any initial comments, fine, and then we'll open it up for questions to the, for council members to ask questions of the, to do that. Do you guys want to sit or stand at the podium, if you want to, we are, you guys are on TV here, so we do have to use a microphone, so if you want to use the podium, that's fine, if not, I have a portable microphone that we can, you want to just use the podium? Okay, let's start with EMC then first, and you guys just go ahead and introduce yourselves, and tell us what, just go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Ron Seymour, I am area senior vice president with Arthur J. Gallagher. Michael Berg is part of the team, actually, he's the leader of our team out of the Appleton office, he also is an area senior vice president. I have put in front of you just a few brochures here that will talk about, you know, Gallagher, and what we are in this space as far as public entity is concerned. The first cover page is, outlines our Wisconsin offices. Arthur J. Gallagher, we are the fourth largest broker in the world with over 16,000 employees, and we are headquartered out of Itasca, Illinois, and Michael and I are on the right side of the border, and Michael's out of the Appleton office, and I am out of the Wausau office. I have been associated with the city of Wapaka since 2010, and in 2009, Arthur J. Gallagher bought the book of business that was handled by Wausau Insurance and the Wausau Signature Agency, and Gallagher, after Liberty Mutual retired the Wausau Insurance brand name, we purchased that book of business, thus we became your brokers. I came involved in 2010, and have been your broker, handling your property and casualty and workers' compensation coverages since that time. If you turn the page, a little bit about Gallagher and our size, we are the largest broker in the United States, handling public entity business, that being schools, cities, villages, counties, we have, in our niche, we have over 200 individuals that are specifically designated to handle public entity business, so what we bring to the table for our customers is a tremendous amount of experience, and we collaborate together to meet the needs of our customers, and because we handle literally thousands of cities throughout the United States, and it's, it is an asset to each customer we handle to have, you know, that level of expertise to meet the risk management needs of our customers. You know, we provide for our customers supplemental type services other than what you get from your carrier. Your carrier typically will have claim people and loss control people, and Gallagher provides a service where we have claim advocates, where if there is a claim that requires special investigation or evaluation, we bring in our claim experts to look at the situation and to work with the carrier to make sure that coverage is being applied correctly, and that, you know, the service and care for an injured worker is meeting their protocol. If you go to the third page, it talks a little bit about two announcements that we as Gallagher, you know, have been awarded, and this comes from our clients, there was a survey done, we were picked as the number one broker in client satisfaction amongst the five top brokers in the country, so that says a lot about what our customers think of us. I think it's safe to say that we've had a good relationship with the city, I've been told that by Henry and Tina. EMC is a carrier that, you know, we work with, that we brought to the city back in 2011, and replaced Liberty Mutual as the carrier, and EMC has been on the, on the coverage since then. The other recognition that we have as far as Gallagher is concerned is, in 2012 and in 2013, we had been voted as one of the most ethical companies, you know, in the industry. We are a publicly traded company, so we work on the premise of full disclosure, as far as what we make, we state that in our proposals, either in the percentage of premium that is in form of commissions, or fees. For your particular program, we are compensated by the carrier as a percentage of premium, and that percentage varies depending on the line of coverage, and that is, you know, in our proposals, and that commission is embedded into the premium, so it's not something that you see in addition to what is being charged by the carrier. The commissions are embedded in that, and the carrier pays us. The last page, I'd like to spend a little bit of time going over, because I think it provides you with some information on how, you know, city governments work, and I know budgets are something that you guys deal with, certainly on an annual basis, and our position with our carriers is that, you know, we want to provide for our clients the ability to give them some type of assurance that, you know, they can have some trust in their, what they need to budget from one year to the next. And if you look at the top box there, going back to the first column in 2011, 2012, we show you what the premiums that were quoted and paid during the course of the year, we did not handle your property at that time, that, at that time, the property was with the local government property program, we did take over the property in 2012, 13 policy year, and showed a savings to the city by taking that over. The dividends that we paid out, or I should say EMC did, is that in 2011 and 12, they had a 25% level flat dividend, meaning that if they declared a dividend, that is what you were going to get, and that is what you received, plus additional dividend because your losses were a lot better than what the level dividend dictated, so you were paid additional percentage above and beyond the 25%. In 2012, 13, you know, we continued with the 25% flat, we were able to negotiate that with EMC, and we typically start this negotiation 90 days in advance, you know, because you guys need numbers to be prepared to, you know, figure out what you're going to allocate as far as expenses are for your budget, as it pertains to insurance. In the current year that you're in right now, and will be ending, you know, the dividend that was negotiated with EMC was 25%. Now, for this renewal, we were able to negotiate a little bit better dividend, that being 26%, and then, you know, that certainly, we anticipate will be declared, EMC has been in business over 100 years, and has never not declared a dividend. So what we put in our proposals, we fully expect that the carrier is going to end up paying out, you know, once the audit of your insurance is done, and then they declare a dividend, so although dividends can't be guaranteed by law, you know, we are 99.9% sure that, based on the financial, you know, stability of EMC, that they will certainly declare a dividend, and, you know, and you will see the full 26% applied to your workers' comp premium. If you drop down and you look at the estimated annual premium, that's right above the bolded numbers, okay? Reason I'm putting that there is because, you know, we expect our carriers to evaluate a customer and provide a fair price, we do not want them to come in and typically, in the industry, buy the business, okay? Because that doesn't do us any good if they're going to come back the next year and inflate their prices to make up for what they feel they may have given away the year before. So it's very important for every, every market that we go to, that they understand that it is in the best interest of them, the client, and us as the broker, that we bring a fair price, you know, to the table. Because I know the city believes in long-term relationships, like I said, Gallagher's been handling your business since 2009, and before that, Wausau Signature Agency was handling it before then, and that relationship continued after Gallagher bought that book of business. So if you look at the bold numbers, you know, the net premium after the dividend was paid out, I think that demonstrates that, you know, we were able to provide you with some assurance that, you know what, we don't have any big peaks or any values, or low values, we're bringing a solid number to the, to the city that reflects what the market is doing, okay? We know the market, how it's being priced, probably better than anybody out in the industry, because we have a large book of business, and so when we go to a carrier, you know, we're giving them target pricing and perimeter, or parameters, as far as how they need to price the account. If they cannot make that, that mark, then, you know, we're not going to probably bring them to the table, because, you know, we don't want them to waste the city's times by coming out and doing surveys and taking up a lot of time, you know, we're going to take our best top two or three, and bring them as a recommendation to the city. This year, we were awarded just EMC to bring to the table as the incumbent carrier and the incumbent broker, and we feel that EMC has definitely stepped to the plate, not only from a financial aspect, but from a coverage aspect, and down below, you know, with the blue headings is each one of the coverages that EMC handles for the city, and I am going to allow Michael to handle that portion, briefly just going over, I think you also have that in the spreadsheet that Tina gave you, okay? I don't know, Henry, does that spreadsheet show EMC's umbrella at $8 million?
It does.
It does? Okay, good, all right. Okay, so Michael, why don't you handle the, you know, the coverage aspect of this, and we'll take questions after that.
Thank you, Ron. Real quickly, before we get into the specific coverages, if we look at the estimated premium, netted dividend, really, 2012, 13, 13, 14, and 14, 15, we're seeing a whole lot of consistency, right? Plus or minus $3,000. Ron made a comment that we know the marketplace very well, and if we look at what's going on in the insurance marketplace generally over that same time period, we're seeing anywhere between rate increases of 3% to 7%, and that's variable by line of business, right? So here, we're seeing that the results that were achieved by the negotiations of Ron and the team at Gallagher, EMC, Henry and his team, and then the solid loss performance and safety commitment that the city has put forth, has actually achieved results much better than what the marketplace would seem to dictate right now, so these are very, very good results being achieved. I know that you'll have some questions for us in regards to the coverages specifically as we move forward, so I'll try to keep this relatively high level, and talk about specifically some of the improvements that, and significant enhancements that we have negotiated onto the EMC program. So looking at the workers' compensation, not a whole lot to talk about there in terms of coverage changes. The general liability, the coverage applies to limits in two ways, one, in each occurrence limit of $2 million, okay, and then an aggregate limit of $2 million, and a products and completed operations aggregate of $4 million. So in general terms, the per occurrence limit means exactly what it sounds like, the limit that's available for any one single occurrence. The aggregate that's available is the aggregate, the most limit that will be paid in any one policy year regardless of the number of claims, okay? So $2 million per occurrence, $4 million in the aggregate, on the completed operations are $2 million for the general aggregate. The commercial auto has a combined single limit of $2 million. That policy is not subject to an aggregate limit, so $2 million combined single limit, and that may be a little bit different than what you might be accustomed to on your personal policy, where there's a separate limit for bodily injury or property damage, here it's just $2 million whether it's property damage or bodily injury. Okay? I'm going to jump past the umbrella, and I'm going to come back to that in a second. So the next is the public officials' liability, there's a $2 million limit per wrongful act, and a $2 million annual aggregate limit. I'm going to jump past the property and focus more on the liability coverages right now, past the crime as well, and down to the police professional, so there's again, a $2 million limit for each wrongful act, and a $2 million limit for an annual aggregate. If we jump back up to the umbrella, the umbrella is there to do exactly what it sounds like, it sits above and around the other liability coverages, so the scheduled underlying coverages on the umbrella include the employer's liability portion of the workers' compensation policy, the general liability policy, the liability portion of your auto policy, your public officials' liability, and your police professional liability. So your umbrella provides really two key important functions. Your umbrella limit is $8 million per occurrence, and $8 million in the aggregate, and that's an increase from the prior year. Prior year, we were at $3 million, EMC in trying to continue the partnership with the city of Wapaka, and Gallagher has increased that to $8 million to afford a different, additional coverage. So the two key functions of the umbrella, one, it provides an additional $8 million of limit for any single occurrence, so rather than having a $2 million police professional limit, you have $10 million of coverage available for any police professional event, okay? The other important thing that it does is it provides dropdown coverage in the event that you exhaust the aggregate limit on one of those underlying policies. So your history hasn't shown that you're going to have the significant claims to get to that aggregate level, and there's some tort immunities and caps in the state of Wisconsin that do a nice job of protecting those aggregates as well, but in the event that you have a public, you have claims under your public officials' policy, or your police professional policy, and that aggregate limit is exhausted, your umbrella drops down and pays future claims until that $8 million limit is exhausted, okay? So it's really, we look at it, depending on the coverage parts, the general terms, $10 million worth of coverage available per any one occurrence, or in the aggregate for your liability coverages.
I do have one, excuse me. When an employee uses his personal car for city business, is that covered under the commercial vehicle part of it, or not?
Sure, the employee's personal automobile liability policy will respond primary, and the city's policy will respond on an excess basis.
Okay.
So the city has that additional protection afforded.
I just want to bring up one point, you know, it's, the city does a good job of keeping and maintaining a, you know, a driver's list.
We can hear you fine, it's.
Okay, all right. The city does a very good job of maintaining a driver's list that, you know, lists all those individuals who have authority to drive city vehicles, and we also recommend that if we have individuals that use their personal vehicle, that they should also have information on that, and that includes, you know, the, a copy of, or a certificate of insurance showing that they have automobile coverage, and then EMC also, on an annual basis, runs MVRs, motor vehicle reports, to make sure that the individuals that we have on the driver's list have valid driver's license, and they're not suspended. I think that's a good risk management tool, because the last thing we want to do is have an individual driving a vehicle on company business or city business, gets in an accident, and we find out that they don't have a valid driver's license, and if it involves bodily injury, it's going to make for good headlines, because the other party, certainly if we're at fault, is probably going to seek an attorney, and that information is going to come out, and then that attorney is also more than likely going to dwell into, okay, what does the city have in place to make sure that their individuals that are operating these vehicles have valid driver's license? With the lack of that, and not running MVRs, and not keeping a list intact, you put the city at great risk of somebody driving a vehicle who doesn't have a valid driver's license. So from a risk management standpoint, I think the city's doing a very good job, we're assisting them in that, and we want to make sure that people that are driving a city vehicle that says the city of Wapak on it has a good driving record, because that's our name, you know, on that vehicle, and we want to make sure that they're operating it properly.
I know that the intention here was for us to talk a little bit, and then turn it over to these folks, and then have questions, is that still the route we want to go, or do we want to take questions now, and?
Anybody have any specific questions right now you want to ask?
I have one, and you've spent a lot of time on workers' comp dividend, and that EMC has declared one every year for 100 years, but you can't guarantee it. What would cause a dividend not to be declared?
If EMC's financial position deteriorated to a point, or there was some other situation in which their board of directors made the determination not to issue a dividend, they would choose not to do that.
So in other words, they could just decide, we don't want to do it?
Correct, they could determine that, again, in that the 100-plus years they have not done that, they have, they extend a lot of faith to their policyholders that those dividends will be declared, and there's no expectation based upon EMC's current financial position, anything in the marketplace that would lead us to believe that they would not issue that dividend.
Anybody else, any specific question?
Real quickly, just to follow up on the dividend, to make sure this is clear, well, we cannot guarantee the dividend payment, the structure of your dividend is that the dividend is payable regardless of your loss history, or it is specific to the city of Wapaka, and not based upon your own loss history, or the loss history of a larger group. If, and what we fully expect to believe, the EMC declares a dividend, you will receive 26% of that audited premium back in the form of a dividend check.
Anybody else? I just have one question, under your fire damage limit for any fire, it looks like our current policy has a $300,000 limit, and our renewal is saying $100,000, can you explain that to me?
Good question. Let me, first, fire damage limit is a little bit of a, potentially a misleading name. Your property insurance policy is in place to protect the city's physical assets from fire or similar peril. The fire damage limit, and to back up that, the total insurable value under your property insurance policy is nearly $76 million. The fire damage legal liability coverage part under the general liability is a coverage part that provides protection for situations where you might, on a short-term basis, rent a facility from another party, or somebody like, it's a situation similar to that, so just to clarify that perspective. We'll have to check, I would assume that EMC would continue with a $300,000 continue with a $300,000 limit and perhaps it's a typographical error on our part, so we will check with that.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you understand the legal liability limit? So if you're renting a facility from somebody and there is a loss, and it is deemed that you were negligent in causing that loss, and the owner of the building comes back, you know, and presents a suit and wants to, you know, basically subrogate for their losses, that liability limit is there to protect you for that, okay? So, but if there's a loss to your property that's owned by the city, that's covered under the property policy.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, I probably have some questions later on for you. All right, let's move on then to the individuals that are representing the league's insurance.
Good evening, and I'll speak on behalf of the league. My name is Dennis Tweedell. I'm the chief executive officer for the League of Municipalities program. Terry Christian and Dustin Frosty are here. They're agents with the Westland Insurance Agency. And, boy, all I can tell you is you're gonna just hear a complete contrast with regard to what the prior presentation, nothing wrong, just, you know, completely different. As an example, you're looking at 50% of the employees of our program. I have an administrative assistant, and my job basically is to manage our service providers. Now, that said, I've been involved with the league's program going back to 1984, and I've been involved with the local government property insurance fund that used to insure you up until just several years ago. I set up basically the way it looks today, starting in 1980 through 1992 under contract with the state. At that time, lost the contract to Aon Insurance of Green Bay, but still very familiar with it. So that program is probably about 90% of what I had originally written, as is the insurance policy that we're proposing. I wrote the policy. I've been doing this business, like I say, since 1984. The first 17 years, the league program of which you were insured in, was with Wausau Insurance. That went well when Nationwide Insurance bought them. Wausau got in trouble and just about went out of business in 1987. They were purchased by Nationwide Insurance. Liberty Mutual purchased them from Nationwide Insurance in 1998, I believe it was, and the relationship that we had, which was very, very good relationship, we had about 408 insureds with the program of the 590 cities and villages. It went downhill in about six months. Became very clear that Boston could have cared less about a program in Wisconsin, so the directors of the league insurance trust, of which you were participants, decided, well, we can, we'll do another carrier until we get our own insurance company formed, and we formed a league municipalities program in 2002. We've been operating ever since. We are up to 380 insureds. We have the majority of the cities and villages in the state of Wisconsin. You have to be a member of the league municipalities to be a member in it. It's been a very successful program. The, one of the main differences when you look at the program is we operate only in the state of Wisconsin. I operate using six agencies across the state. They're designed, the way I have it designed is they are assigned territories. So each of my agencies is very, very proficient in municipalities because for a person like Terry, that's the majority of the business that he does. Terry has, what, somewhere in the neighborhood of 45, 50 different municipalities? Well, 73, I was thinking of a different one. Very, very proficient, again, in terms of what the coverages are, what the needs are. And when I saw the spreadsheet on the coverages, there's a lot of numbers there, and I'm familiar with numbers. Like I said, I'm really the main face of the program, and the service providers that we use are United Heartland out of New Berlin, Wisconsin. United Heartland's a very, very large workers' compensation-only carrier. They do about $185 million coverage a year in work comp only in the state, but I'm the work comp carrier. I contract with them to do all of the servicing, the issuing of the policies, the claims handling, and the loss control. The reason we can do that is I knew the CEO of that company, they did not wanna write cities and villages because there is no commitment to early return to work for the policeman and fireman. They, as a company, just wouldn't write them. That worked out great for me. I'd known about them from other programs that I worked with. And so we worked out an arrangement where on an administrative contract, we are only one of two companies that they service and do all the service work on work comp. They are by far the premier work comp carrier if you were insured in the state of Wisconsin when you look at their history over a three- or a five-year period. It works out for us because they're not in our territory. We obviously aren't gonna go after the type of business that they do, yet I get the benefit of a company that's $185 million in work comp only. We write $12 million of work comp in the state. With regard to liability claims, we use a company called Statewide Services. Now, you've never heard of Statewide Services, but you have heard of Rural Mutual. Statewide Services is a subsidiary of Rural Mutual. Rural Mutual is the largest writer number-wise of governmentals in the state of Wisconsin. They currently insure 865 towns. They are the endorsed carrier for the Wisconsin towns program, but they don't write cities or villages. I don't write towns. I knew the CEO, luckily, of that program. We worked out an arrangement with them, again, under administrative contract basis, to be able to do the claims. So I've got a carrier that's been in the municipal business for more than 30 years with 850 other insureds in the state, doing my claim adjusting, not on the risk, but doing the claim adjusting for it. I've got six law firms across the state that represent our program. We get very good service out of them. It's been the same six organizations for the past 15 years because when we were with Wausau Insurance, we were using some of those same defense firms for our public official liability insurance. Very mature program, very, very up to speed with regard to what governmental business is. And what I said before, you're looking at a lot of numbers. I truly don't think that's where you should focus at all. We've got plenty of coverage available in terms of our limits. We have a $6 million limit. There's no aggregates. We can argue about eight, 10, you know, whatever it is you need. The other limits, they're adequate, that for the most part, that both of the programs have, you know, have proposed to you. But what isn't being talked about here, and I wanted to spend a little bit of time just because this is my business, I've seen a lot of what's happening with competition, I know what our coverages are, I know it's in our 59-page policy that includes eight endorsements for our liability coverage, that's the entire program, 59 pages. Your current liability program is 235 pages with 94 endorsements in five policies. We have one policy with 59. When I wrote the local government property fund policy, I had an eight-page policy with three endorsements. Your current policy is about 115 for property. That just shows some of the difference in thinking in terms of who or how the league operates. And part of what this translates to is every company that operates in the state of Wisconsin has to file a form with the office of the commission of insurance. It's a annual statement, it's on an accounting basis called insurance accounting as opposed to GAAP accounting, statutory accounting. And on page 18 or 19, I believe it is, I did give a copy of it to Henry, it shows what our expense ratios are for operating. Everybody has to follow the same rules to get down to the same number. A typical insurance company in the state of Wisconsin, property, casualty, work comp, is gonna be in about the 30% to 35% range in terms of expenses. The filing as of December 31st, EMC was at about 33%, give or take a tenth. We are at 18. Last year we were at 17, sort of thing. It shows, again, a difference in the model that we have with regard to operations, with regard to expense. We're under the umbrella of the League of Municipalities. You've been members of that probably going back to when they were formed, I think it's 118, 200 years, 118 to 120 years ago. I take it very seriously. When you look at the directors in our program and some of the materials you have in that pamphlet that you have, where you see our letterhead, when you take a look at the directors, we've got the executive director for the League of Municipalities, Jerry Duchaine, who just replaced Dan Thompson. Dan Thompson had been there for 25 years. We have three elected officials from across the state and three administrative officials. That's the board of directors that I have to report to. And basically, their charge to me is, Dennis, if we don't have at least the same or better coverages than anybody else, there's no need for us to be in the business. With that, I asked Henry for a copy of your current policies. And Henry was good enough to send it down to me. I went over with him, over them with him, and this is a, it's a copy of your policies. And the little pink things on here were issues that I believe you have coverage-wise. That's what I was saying, I think the focus should be on coverage, it should not be on the numbers. We're both adequate with regard to the amount of coverage you have. But it's what is that coverage over? So if you have $6 million, if you have $2 million, or whatever it is, what's, what are the exclusions? And let me tell you a couple things that I find in your policies that are not in our policies. First of all, your police are not covered for punitive damages, which I think is an absolute horrendous mistake. You will have defense for that, but if there's a payment or if there's an award for punitive damages, no coverage. It was either three or four years ago that the town of Beloit got hit with two different $500,000 punitive damages awards. They were insured by a company through a organization called Horton, AAIS, I don't even know what it stands for. They had punitive damage coverage, I took care of it. We were involved in a claim, the largest police claim we've had under this program in the city of, or the village of Monocwa, where we put a biohazard hood on an individual that the policeman thought was a spit hood, and he died of suffocation in the backseat of the police car in 2004. Had that individual been a minority, we would have had on national TV probably riots like you wouldn't have imagined in Madison or in the Milwaukee area. We had punitive damages coverage, we had coverage for that claim, we were lucky to settle it for $1.5 million. You have, under your crime policy, which I don't write, but again, I'm familiar with the needs and I make sure our agents do what they're supposed to on them, you have an exclusion on your crime policy. First of all, I wanna commend you on having $250,000. We have a hard time many times getting insureds to get $100,000. $250 is great, I'd rather see it $500, but I'm happy that you're there. Except, it excludes bonded employees and the treasurer. Now, if I ever found one of our agents writing it in that manner, I think I'd probably yank their license. Who's bonded? Henry's bonded, your police chief is bonded? I don't know who the acting treasurer is or treasurer, sort of thing, maybe that's you also, sort of thing. But again, in the, when you do just municipal business, the way to write the policy is these positions have to be bonded, you have to have a bond. It can be for any amount. But once you have the bond, then you delete the exclusion for bonded positions, so the employee dishonesty is excess of that. Right now, whatever the bond is that's on Henry and the chief, that's the maximum coverage there is. And the policy doesn't have computer fraud and wire transfer fraud. It just has employee dishonesty. Again, it's a standard that in our program, if you had been with us, and when you were with us, you would have had those coverages. The specific exclusion for cyber liability, exclusion. Normally, I've seen EMC write a policy that has a cyber liability endorsement, and they charge about $600 or $650. See, I see them all the time. Yours is the first policy that I've seen that's had a specific exclusion for cyber liability events. Our policy, we cover it up to policy limits. I'm not afraid of cyber liability. I don't see it as a, the same issue that nonprofits and for-profit corporations, but you have no coverage under your program. You have no coverages for anything that happens at your beach, at your fairs, or at festivals. You say, well, how can that be? Again, it's because of the way the EMC policy is written in the state of Wisconsin, and it's been this way forever. They just recently changed an endorsement from 14 excluded activities down to nine. But one of the nine is beaches, pools, or any swimming area, unless it's specifically listed in what they call the declaration page of hazards, and it isn't there. You also don't have coverage for any fairs, festivals, fireworks, anything of that sort, with the exception if the claim comes from the use of your land. I mean, these are items that every community that we insure in the state has a fair or a festival. Luckily, most of them have water, we've got 13,000 lakes. You know, for the life of me, I wouldn't dream of writing that into the program that I wrote. Back wages and benefits. You have a $50,000 limit for the payment of back wages and benefits on your program. We, again, have policy limits, the $6 million. When I look at my 10 largest claims that we've had, two of the 10 have been employment claims, that they've been well into the six figures and well above the $600,000 figure each of them. Again, we've got the coverage for that, you have $50,000. You'd have defense of the claim, that's no issue there, but there is a limit on the back wages. I'm not gonna go on forever on these, but there's a couple others that I think are really pretty important, sort of thing. Again, I'm pretty familiar with what's going on with property. We have a program for no-fault sewer backup. I know EMC does two, maybe you've chosen not to do it, and that's fine. 60% of our insureds don't take the no-fault insurance coverage. But on your regular property coverage, if we had a backup in this building, as an example, what you're looking at in the basement, if you get several feet of sludge in here from a sewer backup, you have a maximum of $100,000 of coverage in your program. And let me tell you, $100,000, I've paid more for that in basements of homes. Two other things on the umbrella policy that they're talking about, and again, part of this, I think, just becomes because of the five different policies and trying to coordinate them, the commercial umbrella policy that's used by EMC and then has an endorsement for municipal use on it, the, there's an endorsement in it that excludes any activity for police and fire. There's an exclusion to that exclusion, which I don't believe is allowed in the state, but that's the way it's written, for police activities for two of the three coverage parts. So the police are covered for bodily injury, they're covered for personal injury, that's libel, slander, defamation of character, and for advertising, but they are not covered for wrongful acts. And wrongful acts is where the real activity is with police. That is covered under your police policy here with the police policy limits. It is not covered under the umbrella policy. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk about, because just with the tornado activity and some of the other activity that we see that's been happening weather-wise lately across the Midwest, your policies have a 100% co-insurance requirement. Normally, there's what's called an agreed amount endorsement, meaning the company takes the values that you reported as meeting the co-insurance requirement. That agreed value endorsement is not on your current policies. I went over these with Henry, I'll leave them with Henry, sort of thing, he can see where what's here. There's probably another 20 or 30 items in here. We're specialists in the municipal program for a reason, and this is the reason that the league started its program back in 1984, was to take care and make sure that the municipalities that put their trust with the league truly relied on people like myself, people like Terry, to take care of what their needs are, to not have to be second-guessing who or what coverages were that were needed. Of the 380 insureds that we've had in the past three years, I've only lost five. And most of those were small, most of those were to a local agent. You know, that happens, you know, they come and go, but for the most part, when they come, my retention is 99.2% over the past five years, sort of thing. When people come with us, they just seem to stay. We've got excellent claim service, I have excellent loss control service, my loss control- My loss control services are different than a lot of other people, and again, the league's different. I'm not going to come here and tell you how to maintain your playgrounds. I'm not going to be here to come and tell you how to fix your sidewalks or how to run your sewer districts. You know that. Your people know how to do that. I've got materials available. If you need somebody, yes, I could bring somebody out, but I'm not going to have people out on the ground taking up your employees' time. I do have loss control staff coming for workers' compensation. But our method in workers' compensation is to train management. It's not to train employees. We will if required, but for the most part, our training is for the management. It's for the first-line supervisors. Because employees have learned long ago that when big crowds are together and the somebody's up there trying to teach some safety items, who is it that gets up and leaves the room to go check their BlackBerrys or their emails? It's the supervisors. Well, what do you think? What kind of message you think that sends to the employees? Sort of thing. Our methods work. Our workers' compensation experience mods, I think, are stellar. We've got a number of insurers, your size, obviously. We have quite a few that are larger. And out of 380, we obviously have a number of them that are smaller. I would welcome any questions that you have. I know I've thrown a lot at you, but like I say, when I saw so much of the discussion and was hearing that the discussion was going on, amounts of coverage, even premium. I think, I thought it was important enough to bring up some of the coverage differences between the league and the other program that you have currently in place. Obviously, don't know what was in their new proposal. I don't know if it'd be any different than what you had. It didn't seem to indicate, other than the increase in the umbrella limit. And I think the umbrella limit they had before was probably adequate. It's the underlying coverages in the policy, not the amounts that you have to be concerned about. So, how's that for a quick insurance education?
Anybody have any questions with Dennis?
Yes.
Paul, go ahead.
There are several spots here. I know you said not to pay attention to numbers.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I'm paying attention to them. Concerning aggregates, under general liability, we have a general aggregate limit and a products completed operations aggregate.
Yes.
Under public officials' liability, we have annual aggregate. And under police, we have another annual aggregate.
Right, under your current policies, that's correct.
Well, I'm looking at your column here. Under those headings and in those three sections, there's no number here. Does that mean that there is no aggregate?
There's no aggregate, that's correct. So if you had three, five, or if you had, we quoted a $6 million limit, didn't we?
I'm looking at five here.
Okay, five. If we had three different events that were $5 million, you'd have the $5 million for each of them. If you had 100 $5 million events, you'd have five times that. I have reinsurance behind what I do. So that's how I can do that.
Okay. My second question concerns the dividend, the workers' comp dividend. Is it true that your dividend is, it says average last five years, 10%? Is that 10% based on the workers' comp premium or the entire premium?
That's the entire, well, that's the entire liability premium. So it's work comp and the liability portions, not the property.
Okay, good. That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you.
Paul?
Okay.
Paul to Paul.
Yeah. Could you speak to the reasoning why for uninsured motorists and underinsured motorists, you have $25,000 and $50,000?
Yep. Oh, God, I love this one.
Versus 300 and 300.
Right.
Or what the current policy is.
Yep. Okay, first of all, the theory behind uninsured, underinsured motorist coverage is if you're hit by uninsured or underinsured motorist coverage, your liability policy on your policy does nothing. So the uninsured portion allows you to stand in place, stand in place of what a party suing a carrier that had to respond, okay? The city should have city employees driving the vehicles. City employees are covered by workers' compensation, which covers 100% of the medicals. It covers 2/3 of their wages, tax-free. If that isn't adequate, then there's the $10,000 medical payment, there's the $25,000 uninsured, underinsured. If that isn't adequate, and this is the reason that we don't go higher, employees' personal vehicle and what they're purchased on their personal vehicle, that uninsured and underinsured motorist coverage would then be next in line. And if an individual isn't carrying it on his own vehicle in amounts he feels adequate or she feels adequate, then why would the city want to be spending, I think it's approximately $3,000, to provide a coverage that the individuals should have already purchased on their own vehicle? It'd be equivalent to buying liability coverage for the individual's vehicle. Now, on a personal basis, for those of you just on your own car, your own home, or whatever, my recommendation has always been, let's say you've got half a million dollars of coverage for your personal auto. You want that as a minimum in uninsured, underinsured motorist coverage, and assuming you have an umbrella. And if you don't have an umbrella, I'd go out tomorrow morning and purchase at least a $2 million personal umbrella, but get at least a million of that for uninsured, underinsured motorist coverage. I've gone so far because I have grandchildren now, luckily, that I ferry around every now and then. I've purchased uninsured, underinsured motorist coverage on our boat, because it's available on a boat. I could get hit just as easily on a lake as I could on the thing. But it's a very important coverage, but it's a personal coverage. It's not a coverage that should be provided through the business. And if a, let's say that Henry's going down to a conference in Madison and his wife is going along, get hit by uninsured motorists. Same thing's going to be available, I shouldn't say the same thing. She would not have workers' compensation available to her. She would have the med pay, the $25,000 of uninsured motorist coverage, Henry's coverage, and she would have the right to sue Henry and the city. So that's where her coverage comes from, because the liability side is there. If Henry wasn't negligent, they would then go to their own policy.
I'm trying to understand what you said to begin with. You said, so let's say, for example, the chief is hit by an uninsured motorist in a city vehicle. So the policy covers him for, and it's uninsured?
Yep.
Okay, so that would be, uninsured would be $25,000 plus the workers' comp for any injury that the chief had.
And then his, then his personal policy, whatever limits he had.
Do our employees, city employee, or city vehicle you're talking about, right? Yeah, I'm talking about city vehicles.
Right, yeah, exactly.
But that would be personal vehicles too, then.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Your personal vehicle, the uninsured on your personal vehicle applies regardless of the vehicle that you're in.
I don't, I bet you nobody knows.
You know, and the question came up, you know, which the answer is exactly what it should be with regard to employees using their own vehicles. You know, that's, that's fine. Their coverage is primary. My recommendations are a little bit different, just for probably ease of administering. I don't believe there's a need to check insurance that people have individually, but in terms of the licenses being checked, yes, that's a definite plus.
You know, the company I used to work for required, when we used our own personal vehicles, to have business coverage for our vehicle. And then they specified certain minimum limits as well. Now, apparently, we don't do that. So you don't do that.
Well, there really is no such thing in Wisconsin as business coverage on a personal vehicle. What would happen there is if you went to your carrier saying, I need a certificate of insurance for the city of Wapaka, sort of thing, because I'm using it for business reasons. If you hadn't declared that when you did your personal application, your premium's going to go up, sort of thing. That's another one of the reasons that I don't recommend that you ask people to get a certificate of insurance.
Well, I've been retired 10 years, so things have changed perhaps since then. But, you know, we had to show proof of insurance, business coverage, or...
See, I don't know how you could get business coverage on a personal vehicle, because there's automatic provisions in a policy that take care of that. But that's fine.
Okay. Any other questions specifically for Dennis? Anybody? Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ron, Mike, you guys want to respond at all? Or does anybody else have any questions of Ron or Mike now that we've heard Dennis's side? We've heard both sides here.
As far as some of the things that he pointed out, they are correct as far as the coverages within the policy. As far as special events and that stuff are concerned, we do write separate policies for that as they come up. And that's how EMC handles that coverage and Gallagher handles it for their customers. As far as the uninsured motorists is concerned, you know, that can be something we could debate all night long, as far as whether or not $300,000 or $25,000 or $10,000 is the correct number. You know, I believe it's important to protect, you know, both the city employees, you know, and vehicles that they operate from, you know, unfortunate events of, you know, somebody getting involved in an accident where the other party does not have enough insurance or no insurance at all. So that's why the limits are what they are. Other than that, you know, we are, I think the major difference is, and, you know, coverage is important. Nobody's debating that, that it shouldn't be from a cost aspect. You know, the way dividends are calculated by the carrier is much different than the league. They're using a 10% average, but there's no guarantee that that's going to be paid out. 2011, I believe, they did not pay out a dividend at all. At least, that's what was indicated in their specifications. So from a budgetary aspect, you know, I ask that you look at the, what EMC is offering, because it's 99.9% sure that it's going to be paid out based on their past history, where with the league, you know, it's not only the experience of them, or you, the city of Wapaka, but it's the experience of all the members as far as what dividend is going to be declared, if any at all. So with that, I'll take any other questions.
Ron, can you answer the question that Dennis stated about beaches? I mean, because we do have a city beach, and he talked about not be, our beach not being insured. Not sure I fully understood that, but under our current policy, is our beach covered?
Yeah, I'm going to have to refer to the policy and, you know, and look at that specific language. I don't have the policy with me. And so, you know, I can certainly get back to Henry, but, you know, it is property owned by the city. If there's a, you know, bodily injury or property damage, that is, well, be more bodily injury than any kind of property damage. That would be the exposure. I'll look to see how the policy reacts to that, but I don't have the, I don't have the policy with me to look into it.
Okay, and then as far as, sorry. I just, you were talking about special events, okay? Now, most of our special events are done by other organizations, namely our Chamber of Commerce and so on. And so, I guess we wouldn't be liable for that anyways, but what if they were not insured for that either?
Well, that's part of your risk management philosophy, that anybody that is, that the Chamber of Commerce or the city is hiring and outsourcing, you know, like fireworks and that, that you request from them a certificate of insurance. And our rule of thumb is, is the level of coverage that you're requesting should be equal to what you, as a city, carry yourself. So, and I'm not aware of the fact of the city being, you know, delinquent in asking for certificates of insurance. It's certainly something that we discuss with you guys, to remind you that, you know, anytime you have a third party providing a service for the city, be it a contractor or a special event, that before they step onto premises, provide any type of work or to conduct, you know, a special event, that they need to supply you with a certificate of insurance.
So, we just had an event, sorry about bogging down here, but I just want to fully understand this. So we just had an event this last week, and it was Strawberry Fest downtown. So it was on city property, the city grounds, but it was also on the city streets and so on. So, and that's put on by the chamber. So the chamber would be liable for that, but if somebody got injured on the city property, the city would be covered by your policy or not?
Well, in a suit, they're going to probably bring in the Chamber of Commerce and they're going to bring in the city. That's typically how, you know, an attorney would, you know, attack that. You know, this is, property is owned by the city, if and who have no other coverage, and an individual is injured and it was proven that the city was negligent in some aspect, you know, then there would be coverage for that. But this isn't going to be something that they just, you know, don't do a thorough investigation and what the individual is alleging, you know, took place. And so, yeah, if somebody gets injured on your property, just like a contractor, they come in and they provide you a certificate of insurance and that they have coverage, and then they do not, and they get injured, well, there's going to be coverage for that individual. The other thing is, they're going to be considered an employee, you know, because of the fact that they're performing a service on behalf of the city. And we thought that they were providing a certificate of insurance that had legit coverage, but if it was determined they did not, and EMC was, or any other carrier that was handling the, say, the workers' compensation because the individual got injured, you know, they would become an employee. And payroll would be associated to that individual, premium would be charged, but coverage would be offered, would be, well, you'd become part of your employee.
Okay.
Can you, off the top of your head, list some of the exclusions of the umbrella policy? I know it's brought up that wrongful acts by police are specifically excluded. What are some other ones?
I believe you said punitive damages is what you are.
No, that's wrong, wrongful acts on the other.
I don't have the policy here. It would be something that I would have to, to look into further and discuss with EMC.
Okay.
Off the top of my head, I do not have, you know, you know...
Do you know how many exclusions there are?
On the policy?
On the umbrella?
Uh, no. Not the number of exclusions, no.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? I wish I could tell you guys you had a week or two weeks to decide on this, but we need to decide tonight, because the policy starts July 1st. So we'd be looking for additional discussion or a motion on a carrier?
I would like to move that the city use the League of Municipalities for their insurance coverage for 2015 at their quoted premium.
Okay, we have a motion by mail, second by Peterson, that we approve of the insurance from the League of Wisconsin Municipal Mutual Insurance, and Westland is the brokerage firm. Any discussion on that?
Um, Mayor, could, assuming the ten percent average for the dividend from the League of Municipalities, um, and by my math, it was the work, the premium for the workman's comp and the, um, general liability, is that, so ten percent of that would be roughly nine thousand dollars, is that?
Well, they have, they have it as eleven thousand dollars.
Eleven thousand is what an approximation would be.
Yeah.
So I was just looking at what the, the price differential, estimated price differential would be between the two.
Well, we'd be looking at a hundred and, with the, if we were to receive it, you'd be looking at a hundred and, approximately a hundred and forty-eight thousand for the leagues, and you'd be looking at a hundred and forty-five, uh, rounded. So about, uh, about three thousand dollars difference.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Mr. Tweedle?
Yes.
You had the opportunity to review our current policy. I don't know if EMC had the opportunity to review, review your policy, but is there anything in, in our current policy that is there that you don't offer?
Uh, the only difference would be that I'm aware of is a sub-limit on non-monetary claims. So, and let's say as an example, um, the library here, somebody doesn't want a book in the library, it's just against their religion or whatever, they say it, we don't need that in a public library. And they bring a suit to get that out. They're asking for money. They're asking for you to do something. Okay? We have a limit of fifty thousand dollars for defense, and the Employers Mutual of Warsaw Policy, or Employers Mutual of Des Moines has policy limits for that. So they would have their two million dollars. In the eleven, twelve-year history of the league program, we've had two claims that were fifty thousand dollars was inadequate. The difference also, remember, is, um, we have no, we have no, they have a three thousand dollar deductible. We, I believe, quoted a one thousand dollar deductible. On that part, Terry, or not?
On that.
Oh, not on that. I only quoted the thousand dollar deductible on employee benefits liability. So we would have no deductible on your public official claims versus the three thousand per claim that's on theirs. So the, the numbers are always tough to make, make them work. Thank you.
Any questions, discussion on this? Just do a voice vote here? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. I'm sorry, I, I should have done a roll call vote because it is a contract, so let's do this again here.
All right, let me, uh...
Sorry.
Not as proficient as Sandy, obviously. Okay, um, John Lockwood.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Uh, Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Uh, Deb, let's see there. Steve Hackett's absent. Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Scott Perchatsky.
Aye.
Alan Kealan.
Aye.
And Julian Peterson.
Aye.
We have, uh, seven ayes, um, zero noes, and three absent.
All right. Thanks, guys. Thanks, everybody, for attending tonight. We appreciate it. Um, we need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Kealan, second by Hagan, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is July first, two thousand and fourteen, at six P.M., and is always subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. The meeting is adjourned at seven fifteen P.M. Thanks, everybody.
Okay.